Great. Now that we have a quorum, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting, this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council order here on May 7th, 2025 at 6:31. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty.
Here.
Rallo.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Stasburg.
Here.
Daley.
Here.
Rosenbarger.
Here.
Asari.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, for my point of historical interest, I want to recognize a first that we had this week in Bloomington. If you follow the Bloomington Fire Department on Facebook, which I do, you will already maybe have seen that last Saturday Captain Stacy Mitchell became the first female in the history of the Bloomington Fire Department to cover a shift as acting battalion chief. And this comes not too long, just a little over a year after last year in March of 2024, Bloomington Fire had their first all-female crew. So I wanted to acknowledge those kind of recent firsts in Bloomington Fire history and significance. And it's one of those moments where, you know, as a woman, it can be hard to break into various fields sometimes, and there are various barriers in the way. And one of the barriers that has existed in Bloomington Fire is that not all firehouses had facilities that were separated for both men and women. And so that has been something that has been rectified in various ways on various time schedules in the recent history. And so I want to kind of salute that as one step toward progress and diversifying our local department and our public safety personnel. So moving on to our agenda summation for this evening, we have no minutes for approval. We will then move right into reports, first from council members, and then from the mayor and city offices, where we have an RDC report that was submitted in written form about a month ago or so. We'll get that presentation tonight. We'll have reports from council committees, and then we'll have our first opportunity for public comment on items not on the agenda. And there is a council letter. We'll either look at that for approval during my council member report, or during council committees, if our council member report time goes along, if you guys have a lot to report. After reports are done, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions, which I do believe that we have several of. And then we'll move into legislation for first reading, where we have ordinances. There are four ordinances related to small Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance changes, Ordinance 2025-11, Ordinance 2025-12, Ordinance 2025-13, and Ordinance 2025-14. So we'll have those read as first reading, followed by a first reading for appropriation, Ordinance 2025-06, to appropriate food and beverage tax funds to the Monroe County CIB. The two items on F and G, ordinances 2025-19 and 2025-20, related to towing services, we have been asked to take those off our agenda for first reading tonight. We will hear those for first reading later on. There are just some things that apparently still needed to be worked out in those two ordinances. So after the four UDO ordinances, and then the appropriation ordinance for first reading, we'll move into second readings, where we'll have Ordinance 2025-16, to vacate a public parcel alleyway in the Trades District, and then Ordinance 2025-17, to amend the fixed salaries of officers and employees of the Police and Fire Departments, and then Ordinance 2025-18, to amend the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees. After our legislation concludes for the evening, we'll have an additional period of public comment for those wanting to make comments on items not on the agenda. We'll go over any points of interest for council schedule, and then we'll have adjournment. So seeing as there's no minutes for approval, we're launching right into council member reports. So I will start on my left tonight with Councilmember Asari. Do you have a report this evening?
Yes, just a really brief one. Last night, we held our sort of first session of deliberation around Jack Hopkins Funds. Reason I'm sharing it in report time, I will have a sort of formal report, but just sort of initial reflections on instituting a rubric. I think that, you know, we quickly realized a lot of pain points in doing it. And so we'll love, as we share the official report, for all of you to be thinking about how we might, we talked about this last week, you know, how we might improve tying things like Jack Hopkins to direct outcomes, to clear goals that we might have as a council, as a city, et cetera. But I think that we made, you know, we've started to make some good progress towards that. But just wanted to highlight that we've had over 30 applications for close to $1 million. And the work that so many of these organizations are doing has just been, I mean, really remarkable. And it's been exciting to be able to support that. I'm sure that my colleagues, Andy and Dave and Courtney, probably share that view as well. But yeah, so we're making some progress, and we should, we are on schedule, I guess, to make our recommendations in time to get to council before our recess. And then one other short announcement or update. I had the chance today to visit with Ellie and Matt Spear, who are running the Urban Farm. And I know that Councilmembers Zulik and Councilmember Piedmont Smith have also visited their establishment. And I was really impressed. They're doing a lot of really interesting things around composting, around education in urban forestry, urban farming, and agricultural things, which I think is going to be quite relevant to one of the things that's coming to us in the UDO change. But I would just recommend that anybody who has a chance on council to reach out to them, to connect with them, I think you might really enjoy sort of learning more about what they're doing. And so I certainly did. So just said I would say that, so I'm saying it.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Councilmember Dally? Yes, thank you. So a couple weeks ago, at my last report, I had said that I was going to be using my time for now to focus on local social service organizations that are going to be needing our help in the foreseeable future. So tonight, I thought I would talk a little bit about Exodus Refugee here in Bloomington. As many of you may have heard, there were stories that ICE was in town last week, and Exodus closed their doors for about a week out of fear for the safety of the public that they serve. All of the refugees that they serve are here legally, but there was no guarantee that they were safe. So it was really unfortunate and heartbreaking, and just terrible that they felt that it was safer to close their doors. So if you have the time, the money, the energy, the heart to maybe throw a little bit of compassion toward Exodus Refugee, I'm sure that they would love some outreach right now. There's a lot of different ways that you can get involved. They could use your time. They have a couple different ways that you could volunteer in person, if you want to be part of a welcome team, an employment team, a transportation team, for all sorts of needs as people arrive here in town with often nothing and with no knowledge about how to get around town, or no car, or no way to get around town. So they need help in that way. There's also other ways that you can help by making donations. They're always looking to help these refugees, these new people to our community, help build their households when they have nothing. So they have items, you know, most importantly, right now, they're looking for healthcare items, toiletries, and cleaning supplies, but also all sorts of household items for just setting up a new home. And then, of course, also, if you wanted to make a financial donation, there are ways of doing that. So I encourage you to please look on their website, exodusrefugee.org, see what you might be able to do to lend a hand, and just reach out to them even with, you know, a message of support, and say, hey, what can I do? What do you need help most with? That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
I'll take this opportunity. I just thought of something. So this has come up in the past. It actually came up during budget last year. And that is, our downtown planters, which, of course, have in the past had, as I've noted, native plants, native prairie and savanna perennial plants. And that was implemented a few years ago. I supported it. I thought it was a great idea. In tow comes monarchs and swallowtail butterflies and other insects that pollinate them, birds that eat seed, and so forth. It's also instructive for people, because sometimes that's the first time they encounter a plant that looks exotic, but is actually a native plant. And so I thought it was really a great feature of downtown. Not everybody agreed. Christopher M. G. is here this evening. Don't mean to single you out, but you, I think, have a difference, we have a difference of opinion, and of course, you've stated yours. That opinion won out, because the, my understanding was during budget time, that the planters would be sort of a hybrid, that they would have both native and, I guess, annual non-native ornamentals in it. Well, that's not the case. It's all annual non-native ornamentals, looks to be. This was outsourced to a private firm for upkeep, so they'll be in charge of making sure that it looks tidy and nice, and flowering and all that on a regular basis. However, I count it as with some lament that, you know, that is no longer the case. Beauty is an eye of the beholder. Not everybody agrees that native plants are beautiful, especially when they senesce and look like dried husks, but they do provide food and so forth at that point. So anyway, but this just segues into the fact that those ornamental planters downtown are relatively small part of, I guess, the opportunity for natives to thrive. The real danger are the non-native invasives, which I find in various developments around town, which I am very dismayed about, because we do have planting codes at the city. There is an allowed list of plants. You may not like native perennials, but you could potentially perhaps put in annual non-native ornamentals. But these plantings are invasives. They spread from there. They invade local woodlands, meadows, and so forth. Apparently, we don't have the staff, I've been told, or I was told from Planning and Transportation a couple years ago, that we didn't have the staff to implement our code, which is, to me, is really problematic. I think that we ought to have the staff to do that. I think that needs to be, there needs to be time allotted. So in conclusion, I'll have a lot more to say in the future about this, but I think maybe it's incumbent upon, there are a lot of people interested in the community. In this struggle we're having with non-native invasives invading natural areas, maybe it's incumbent on us to do a tally, to go around, find out where the worst offenders are, and report them to the city. And hopefully, the city will be engaged to approach the property owner or the developer and say, you need to put this right, as you agree during the plan commission process or the council process. Thank you. That was much more long-winded than I expected, but I appreciate your patience. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. I want to go to a much higher level view for my comments this evening. First of all, President Trump says he does not know whether he must uphold the Constitution, which is like asking somebody, is this pen blue? It was such an easy question. The answer is yes. The President must uphold the Constitution, and it's extremely disturbing to me that our President didn't answer a very clear question in a very straightforward manner. But sort of par for the course, but it just points out how blatant his disregard for our founding documents is. Even higher level view, I want to talk just a few moments about Gaza. So I didn't think I would ever bring this up again, because it was such a painful process last year. But this council unanimously passed Resolution 2024-08, calling for cessation of hostilities and for delivery of humanitarian aid to civilians in Gaza in April, and again overriding a veto in May of 2024. After the end of a temporary ceasefire starting in early March, the government of Israel has prohibited humanitarian aid from coming into Gaza. And everybody who has any data has expressed outrage at the gross violation of international law, and the killing of children in the most despicable fashion, as they slowly waste away with no food or medications to help them. So I just wanted to take another opportunity to speak out against the actions of the Israeli government, not against Judaism or people of the Jewish faith, but the actions of the current government of Israel are causing the deaths of thousands of people in Gaza. And I realize Hamas is also to blame, but at this time, Israel is the more powerful source and the one who can improve the situation immensely by allowing humanitarian aid in. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm going to revive a couple months ago. I listed five things that I had done in the last week, and so I'm going to revive that again for just a moment today. So five things that I've done this week related to my council responsibilities and my service to Bloomington, maybe more than five, depends on how you count them. Went to a fiscal, special fiscal committee meeting today. That was really fun and interesting. Yesterday, I actually had six meetings, and actually, I counted six on my calendar just barely, and I realized that was, there was actually like one added in at the end. So really, that's seven meetings with various city staff and community members and colleagues yesterday. It was a very busy day. I reviewed some proposed upcoming UDO changes headed to the Plan Commission in June. I communicated with constituents via email. And lastly, I worked with Councilmember Piedmont Smith to finalize the budget priorities letter that we started last week at our special session, which, given the time that we've already spent on council member reports, I think that we are going to discuss that and hopefully vote on that during the council committee time. And I just want to thank my colleagues for their reports tonight. So moving on then, in our report time to the mayor and city offices, who is here? Who is going to go first, I guess I should say, for the RDC report? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Council. Controller McClellan here to give you the annual RDC report. So you have in your packet a memo that is the report that has to be submitted to the RDC with additional information that I wrote in the memo to give you some context, and to try to give a little bit more detail than what is required in the annual report that I submit to the state. So I'm just, I'm going to go over what is required here, and then Anna Kelly and Hanson is going to give you a presentation with more pretty pictures and really interesting information about the TIF projects that we do. So every year, we have to report on who are the members of the RDC, and that is in the report. We have to report on the revenues in our TIFs. So we have two active TIF funds, TIF areas, Kinzer Prow, which is a small TIF up north of North High School, and the consolidated TIF. Kinzer Prow received a little over $86,000 in property taxes last year, and the consolidated TIF received almost $18 million in property taxes last year. We also have to report on the expenditures that the RDC spends out of the TIF in that calendar year. Kinzer Prow was spent on the Griffey Dam Trail. It was a little over $158,000. TIF was spent on bonds, principal and interest, and other services and charges are all those, all of those different various projects. So our projects in 2024 were First Street Reconstruction, which is down by, on the south side of Hopewell. Beeline 17th Street Extension Project, which is up by, the name of that street is escaping me now, it's north of, the street is escaping me. I literally can't say the street. Our bonds, garage repairs, the TIF is responsible for some garage repairs. Hopewell, that is, majority of that is First Street, sorry, is the, all the work done in Hopewell East, which is the large parcel where the park is now. The Tech Center and Trades District combined for about $5 million. The Tech Center is the forge, and those Trades District expenses were coded for Trades District, but I think there's some, there's some crossover there, a lot of crossover for those Trades District expenses were also Tech Center expenses. This information doesn't go to the state. This is not part of the TIF, like the official annual report. Community Crossing Matching Grant was a label that was applied to one of the expenditures. It was the First Street Reconstruction, and it was just our match for that grant that was paid to the state. So that's, that's kind of the middle part of the report. The last part of the annual report is our bonds. So we have to, we only have to report on the, well, I'm sorry, I skipped over fund balances. We do have to report on the ending fund balance of each TIF fund. The consolidated TIF ended with a little over $17 million, and the Prow TIF ended at $648,000. The Meridian TIF is a single parcel, personal property TIF, and it has a developer agreement attached to that TIF. And in that agreement, well, the TIF revenue is generated by the personal property. The personal property is the underground fiber network that that, that Hoosier Network, Hoosier Networks is installing throughout the city. That is the personal property. So when that gets an assessed value, it's going to create TIF revenue. And the agreement is that the city will return 95% of that revenue to the developer. So it's still zero. We don't have an AV for that yet. And as soon as that comes online, we will start. We have been in contact with the developer, and we're ready to start completing that agreement. So I listed the different bonds that we have, and also, for your information, I listed the main project that that bond was taken out for. So that would be like this certified tech park. That was a 2011 downtown TIF bond. And then right below that, I wrote some retired bonds. So the 2011 downtown TIF bond is a retired bond, but it was refunded with the 2017 TIF bond. So just so you know, we have retired bonds, but it's because they've been refunded. We're still paying off those bonds. All right. And then we have the bonds themselves. We do have to report on the outstanding amount of the bond to the state, all the other information, like the beginning, the amount of bond proceeds, the beginning amount of the bond. I listed that for you, and the issue date, and the maturity date. So if you want to know how much do we spend every year in bonds and bond payments, that's in the 2024 expenditures, TIF principal and TIF interest. It's almost $7 million. But if you look at these bond maturities, we have a lot of bonds that are maturing in 2030. That is the extent of sort of the official report that I am, that we are required to give to you, the City Council and the RDC. We're required to give this report, to submit this report to you by April 15th, and we did do that. And thank you very much for postponing this report and finding time for us to report to you. I'm going to invite Hand Director Anna Killian Hansen up to give her report, and then we would be happy to answer questions.
Good evening. My name is Anna Killian Hansen, and I am the Director of Housing and Neighborhood Development. One of the other hats that I would do wear is also that of the Executive Director of the Redevelopment Commission. The City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission oversees tax increment financing, known as TIF, in tax increment districts. The Redevelopment Commission is also the governing body of the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department as part of our citizen participation plan, overseeing the duties and responsibilities of the programs, such as community development block grants, home investment partnerships, and neighborhood improvement grants. The Redevelopment Commission exists to revitalize blighted areas, economic growth, improve housing and infrastructure, addressing environmental issues, facilitate private sector investment, preserve or enhance community character. The Redevelopment Commission has the statutory authority of Indiana Code and the Bloomington Municipal Code. Membership of the Commission consists of five appointed members, three by the mayor, and two by common council. In addition, a member of MCCSC as a non-voting ex officio. By code, the officers of the Commission consist of the President, Vice President, Secretary, Executive Director, and the Fiscal Officer, known as the Controller or the Treasurer. By code, the officers of the, oh, the TIF financing is a type of financing that funds the redevelopment of blighted areas and economic development of rapidly developing areas. TIF redirects future property tax revenues generated from new development or improvements within a designated area. TIF helps fund infrastructure improvements, public services, or incentivizes private investment, and in return, the future increases in property tax revenues, the tax increment, generated from that investment are used to pay back the initial costs of those improvements or incentives. When TIF district is created, the assessed value of all properties within that district is recorded as the base AV. The local taxing entities, for example, given the city, county, school district, continue to receive property tax revenue calculated on this base AV, just as they would without the TIF district. If new development or redevelopment occurs within that TIF district, the assessed value of the properties will likely increase. This increase is assessed value is the increment. The tax revenue generated from this increment is captured by the TIF and used to finance the project. That is the purpose of the TIF. This could include infrastructure improvements, debt service on bonds, issued finance project, or other redevelopment-related activities. Imagine a property within a TIF district has a base AV of $100,000. Over time, it's redeveloped, and its assessed value increases to $150,000. The $50,000 increase is the increment. The property tax revenue from the original $100,000 is still going to the regular taxing entities, while the tax revenue from the $50,000 increment is captured by the TIF. In essence, the base AV is the starting point for the TIF, and the increment is the additional revenue generated by the development that is used to fund the TIF project. Bloomington has a consolidated TIF made up of several TIF districts, including Adams Crossing, Downtown, Tap Road, Thompson, Walnut Winslow, Thompson, and Whitehall. We have one TIF district outside of the consolidated TIF known as Kinzer Prow. You can visually see where these TIF districts are on this map. We also have the Meridian TIF, which is a personal property TIF called a spider TIF, that is a TIF district with a shape resembling a spider's web or network. This TIF is called the Meridian Fiber TIF and installs fiber optic cable across Bloomington. The RDC owns a number of properties, and highlights do include Showers West, the Trades District Garage and Commercial Spaces, 627 North Morton Street, which is the home of the former Innovation Lab, the Trades District Forge or Tech Center, the Mel, and there are some additional parcels in the Trades District. We have the Fourth Street Parking Garage Commercial Space, four residential lots on Dodd Street, College Square, which is also known as the Bunker Robertson Site adjacent to the Convention Center, parking lot south of the Convention Center, 10 blocks at Hopewell. There are quite a few other properties, if you do pull it up on the GIS, but the majority of them are right-ofways. So you'll see little pieces, but there's not much to be done with that. So just FYI, those are the bulk of our larger So just FYI, those are the bulk of our larger properties. Every year, uh, we have annual resolutions that approve maintenance funds, property insurance, appraisals. And new this year, we had to pass a spending plan. That was a new state requirement, had to be passed by the middle of December of last year. Business highlights, we had the approval of a right of entry for a public art installation and some HVAC repairs at the Fourth Street Garage. At the Trades District, we had the conveyance agreement with, uh, for the Trades District Hotel, which we're very excited about. The approval of Gateway Art, the approval of a number of Forge and Trades Garage leases, the approval of Solar Design. They also approved a number of neighborhood improvement grants, several emergency home repairs, the CDBG allocation recommendations, the approval of CDBG funding agreements. And then Hopewell was the vast majority. We had secondary plats for Hopewell East and West, approval of change orders on the demolition agreement, approval of security patrols, environmental and remediation services, change orders for the East Contractor, more about, more environmental stuff, the efforts to secure 714 South Rogers, approval of fencing, camera installation, utility work, public art installation, and public offerings. And then officially the transfer of the Core Building, which is the original hospital site, set to be 38 units of affordable housing. The Beeline Extension Project was also a highlight. There were approval of change orders and some environmental services. And then we had a number of celebrations in 2024. The Forge opened, which was very exciting. And the College and Community Collaboration Grant from the Lilly Endowment with IU, that was wonderful. We were substantially complete with Hopewell East, uh, or Hopewell Commons on Hopewell East, which hopefully most of you attended, uh, the park opening last month, which was really fun. And we are still celebrating the transfer of the property for the Boutique Hotel in the Trades District as well. So as you can see, the RDC has been very busy in 2024. Our momentum has not stopped in 2025. We have a lot of business that continues to happen. That is the summary of what has gone on in 2024. Thank you for your time. And I will invite Jessica up here for questions as well.
Great, thank you. Do council members have questions? Councilmember Rallo.
A comment, uh, but I'll turn it into a question like on Jeopardy. So I'm regarding the consolidated TIF, I've seen a lot of good come from it. And so I don't quarrel with how it's been utilized, but, um, because it's increasing, it's because of the increase in property taxes generated by new development within it. And it's a very large area. I think we need to be cognizant of the distribution of the dollars that are derived from it and, um, throughout the TIF area. So some areas seem to be kind of orphaned relative to other areas. And I understand because, you know, a lot of activity is concentrated downtown. But, um, so say the Southwest Quadrant is relatively starved of investment so far. Yet it's part of the TIF district. Do you, do you think, um, I mean, I've seen maps of the distribution of the investment. What do you think about, just in terms of like fairness, having it distributed in, in areas where it heretofore hasn't been? Do you have an opinion?
Well, it's just my opinion and I'm just Jessica McClellan and I, but I think that I see that. I think that I, I definitely understand what you're bringing up and it's a very valid point. But I do think that we're leveraging, um, the TIF dollars together as a larger lump sum on bigger projects. And I think that the TIF has been more project based, um, in recent years, and it has gone towards larger projects. And that is what draws those funds away from potentially going to smaller projects in those areas. So that's my only like follow-up comment to maybe just flush that idea out a little bit more. And that's kind of the rationale between, behind some of, most of our spending at this point.
Yeah, um, please, if you.
May I?
Yeah.
So I just want to say that, oh, I have to lower this, sorry about that. You know, much of our business right now stems from projects that were priorities of the administrations either previously or currently. So we have a lot of projects going on. It's difficult to think about allocating to something else right now, just because we have a lot of hands in the cookie jar. And we also have now the implications of SB one. And so we really need to, and we are working on right now, um, more detailed budget of how we're going to accomplish the current projects that we have. I think we're all a little bit reluctant to get overextended. Many of these TIFs are going to expire within the next 10 years. So we just, we don't want to overcommit at this point. So until we have a good fiscal analysis and budget, I, I hear what you're saying, but let's not get overextended.
Yeah, and I hear what you're saying. I, and I agree with you, but just wanted to bring up that.
Yeah.
Point.
Very valid.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Pete Motz Smith.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about, um, the property the RDC owns on West Dodd Street in the McTell Gardens neighborhood, which I represent. Can you tell me more about those, are those vacant lots currently and what's the plan?
They are vacant lots. The previous administration had purchased them from Habitat. Habitat was unable to develop them at that time. So, um, we did take them on. There is some consideration as to what the future of those lots holds. Um, and just for your knowledge, to sell any RDC properties, we have to perform two appraisals. And then we have to put out a public offering. You cannot sell them for anything less than the average of those two appraisals for a certain amount of time. So there is a process, um, if we were to dispose of them.
Okay, but currently there are no plans to build on them?
Not at this time.
Okay. I have another question, but I can wait.
Are there other, actually, um, technically this report time ends at 7:09. So I'm, I'd like to extend that to 7:15, just to allow for more questions unless there's disagreement with that. Great. So are there other questions first round? Okay, um, I have one. Actually, I have a couple as well. The first thing is maybe I just want to point out that on the written report that we got, on the line that it says fund balances as of 12/31/2024, your, um, column headers for total debits and total credits are, I think, swapped because it has our credits exceeding our debits. But I think our.
Yes, we spent more than we received in 2024. We spent 30 million, 30.7 million, and we've received, um, our, all of our revenues were, was 20.6 million. And that cannot happen anymore.
Right, but so the column headers.
No.
The total debit say 20 million and the total credit say 30 million.
For us, debits are, are a debit to the cash account. So a receipt into the cash account is called a debit. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of different. It's always, accounting is, I hate using debits and credits. It's better should, I can just change it to say revenues and expenditures in the, in the future because depending on what kind of account you're talking about, a positive could be a debit or a credit. Or a negative could be a debit or a credit. It's just stupid accounting stuff.
Confusing to me. Right, thank you.
But revenues, in this report, revenues are debits, expenditures are credits. And yes, we did spend more than we received.
Okay, great. So expenditures.
That's because we spent all of this cash on Hopewell. And that's what happens when you spend cash on a giant project instead of like bonding and getting your big lump sum and then just spreading that out with payments over the next like 15 or 20 years.
Right.
Is you really eat into your cash and you can't do that for very long.
Right. And then the, the question that I have, I wanted to follow up on, on what we were talking about with the, with the fiber lines being personal property is kind of part of, like, who ends up paying that then? So is that like, like if there's a fiber line in front of my house, does that mean that my property?
No, business personal, personal property is like, is the business property of a business. So if I ran, if I had a car company and I built cars, all of the machines inside the company to build the cars are my business personal property. So Hoosier Fiber Networks lays down all of this fiber and that fiber, that literally that fiber network is their business personal property and they do have to report that. So Hoosier Networks pay, they, then they get a tax bill, just a regular old tax bill. They pay it, then we receive it. And, and there will be a separate, the way we get taxes, all the tips are broken out and we will see exactly how much we got in payment from them. And then we do a little, do a little transfer.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second round question, Councilmember Pete Motz Smith.
Yes, um, so this is also for Controller McClellan. On the report, so where you have the, let me see, let me try to find where the question was. Sorry.
That's all right.
Oh, okay. So you have on the page where you have debt service obligations and then debt service payments made in 2024. That second, uh, table for the debt service payments, you have a column with total outstanding principal and interest as of 12/31/24. Why is that different from, um, outstanding par amount in the table above?
The outstanding par amount doesn't include the interest. So the outstanding principal and interest is like our all-in, how much is due. Outstanding par amount, like that is what is required that, to the state, that's all they want to know. And I, I added that, um, principal and interest in that table because I thought that that's what you would really want to know, what's our all-in cost?
So the par amount does not include interest?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other second round questions? Okay, I, I have one more then. So on the chart and explaining the TIF districts, you guys said that, you know, the, the increase in value based on like improvements is the tax portion that goes into the TIF district. But how do you, or do you, um, separate that from say like inflationary interests or inflationary increases or other, because like assessment increases kind of regularly, whether or not there are actually improvements on the land. So do you separate that kind of stuff out? Is there a metric for that or?
There is, and, and the assessment world is called trending. So even if you didn't do anything to your property, the value can increase because of trending. And I don't know the state code really, really super well for that. And I, but I believe that we receive the, the trending, but we don't calculate that. Like that happens at the assessment and the tax, taxing level.
When you say we receive the trending, do you mean the TIF district receives it or?
Yes, the TIF district receives the trending, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I believe, I believe, but I can follow up.
Uh, councilmember, sorry.
Thank you so much. And, and sorry, I was, I was, um, trying to form, form the question. I, and so I'll sort of ask a twofer if that's okay. The, the first question is, um, you know, I, I think maybe both building off of, um, what Councilmember Rallo asked, but it's maybe with a slightly different, uh, direction. But I think, and I think this was, we started to answer this question, but thinking specifically about the pressures with SB one, could we elaborate a little bit on how that might change the ways that we would use, um, um, TIF districts? And then like thinking very specifically if there's any opportunities for consolidation, expansion, you know, et cetera, to like, like, how might we utilize that tool in some different way in light of the constraints of SB one? And then my, my sort of follow-up, our two-fer, double-barreled question is, um, is we talked about now having to have a plan for spending for, um, uh, that the RDC has to have, have a spending plan for TIF district. And could you, could you talk a little bit about how that aligns with budget timeline and what we might do to better integrate, um, the ways that we're thinking about TIF with the way that we think about the general budget and how you sort of integrate those two processes?
All right, I will start with, okay, I wish I had put in here the, the, um, the statute, the, the list of eligible uses of TIF because it's very interesting. I will add that to the memo for, for future years because I think you'll see a very similar narrative every year. So it's, it's a, um, it's a lot of infrastructure and environmental cleanup and public safety, police and fire, capital expenditures. You can use it on operations, but that's really not recommended, um, just because of, because TIFs have expiration dates. And so the, then to jump to the spending plan, the state hasn't had a new rule last year that RDCs had to pass a spending plan. And there was really no guidelines on what the spending plan had to be. And like in some TIF, some RDCs were just sort of like saying, these are all of our revenues that we're going to get and we're going to spend it, every penny of it on other services and charges, like on projects, on just unnamed projects. And they submitted that and that's the spending plan. So there is, so this, the spending plan was sort of an exercise, I think, in getting RDCs to, to recognize that they need to start thinking about their spending. And some RDCs take it, took it a little bit more seriously than others and ours took it very seriously. And we mapped out what all of our expenses were for the past three years. And we kind of tried to gauge what will we need, um, for projects and ongoing expenses and maintenance of properties. And so we do have a very like, um, a very, like a very real spending plan of what we hope to, that we can spend on, on maintenance and on different projects. Folding that into the budget process is a little different for the RDC because they're so project-based. I think that the, the RDC knows about, um, the, about developments and, um, projects that might be coming online where they could support infrastructure, that could support development. And they're really focused on how could, what can they do to support either environmental cleanups in certain areas that to spur development. They're very focused on spurring development. So that's kind of been the impetus for how the administration would maybe suggest a project to them. So I think city council having good, um, and, uh, the administration's in engineering presenting good information to city council about what projects engineering is having come online and talk about where are those located and how does, you know, how that could fit in, how the RDC could fit into that expenditure. It's not a, I'm trying to give you a pretty vague answer because I also don't want to speak for the RDC. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you both for, for that report on the RDC. We really appreciate it. Moving on to reports from council committees, I had mentioned earlier that we're going to go ahead and talk about this budget letter during the reports from council committees, which is, um, in some ways, this, uh, budget letter in terms of its formatting is coming from the, uh, the fiscal committee. So I think that that can work in this area. So that was emailed out in a packet addendum this morning. And you should also have the most updated version, um, in your email for council members. And our council attorney is going to work on getting that up on the large screen. But I'm just going to go over, hopefully we have it wonderful. So a couple of things, um, got kind of added or changed based on our conversation last week. So the first thing to probably recognize is that in the, uh, in the preamble here, we pulled out the, um, long-range planning documents to just kind of recognize the, because a number of people mentioned like, hey, we want to make sure that we're, you know, what we're doing is supported in our long-range planning documents. And so we wanted to make sure that that was cited in there. I also, if you want to scroll down a little bit, please, thank you. Added in just a little bit more language around how this letter should be viewed and recognition that, uh, the, the pieces that we highlighted are not a comprehensive view of the entire budget. So we just kind of messed with that wording a little bit. And if we scroll down farther, um, took, or changed how we, like to the second page, changed how we, uh, described the, the rankings in terms of, um, the process that we went through to develop those numbers. And so instead of, um, it, when we talked about it last week, it was like blue and red to kind of signify the different levels of support, you could say. And, um, uh, Councilmember Pete Motz Smith and I took that out and just kept in the numbers. I think it just read a little bit cleaner than having the colors. I think it just read a little bit cleaner than having the colors go back and forth. And then where there's not a number, like here under all of those investments, those are things that we discussed last week that people put out as ideas, but we didn't actually have any kind of neutral assessment on. And so one thing to consider is if anybody has any objection to any of those things, because we did have quite a few things that didn't make it into this letter in terms of, you know, scoring less than, than three, nothing that scored less than three made it in, and only a few things that scored between three and three and a half made it in, then I think that this is a moment to be like, hey, I really don't think that that should be in there. Okay? And a couple of those that I definitely want to point out, if we want to scroll down to public safety, Councilmember Asari had mentioned some stuff about EMS during the meeting and then emailed comments to me that were a little bit more fleshed out. And so those were comments that were, that we were not able to discuss at all. If you want to scroll a little bit farther down to where those are under, on the second page, in italic font. And so the first thing that I wanted to make sure to discuss, and I'm going to hand it to Councilmember Asari first, are those specific three items in the italics because we talked about that during fiscal committee today. So these are your EMS worded stuff.
And so maybe what I'd shared at the fiscal committee is that, you know, at the time when we were brainstorming different things to put in this, this letter, you know, one of the things that I'd mentioned was there was this recent report around ambulance services and such things. I did follow up with leadership at IU Health to sort of get a better context of, because the article basically just goes, you know, 96 calls needed to be called out, you know, from somewhere else. And I mean, the broader context is that they had 16,000 calls. And of those 16,000 calls, 96 of them needed to get a, you know, a partner ambulance to come out. Maybe, you know, that's like, what, half of a percentage of their calls. So I don't know if necessarily then it's something to, you know, react to in that way. So maybe I would, I would advocate for making it a bit broader in the sense, because I think then Councilmember Marallo brought up some other things just around, you know, outcomes, around things like wait times and those type of things. But I think just generally trying to capture that, some interest around public health, I think also sort of is covered under the two. So anyways, in short, I would probably scrape line two in light of, you know, more sound information. But other than that, I think, I think the others are useful. I hope that's what you were looking for.
Well, yeah. They were, they were italicized to make sure that we all had a chance to discuss them because they did not get put up on the screen for everybody to discuss last Wednesday. So Councilmember Asari, were you thinking about scrapping all of the things in italics? Like, because there are three lines that have italics in them right now.
Maybe just point two.
So the EMS fund salary offsets? Okay, do other council members have comments about any of these things? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
So it was my understanding that this is more the domain of county government. And certainly in the first italicized bullet point, it says across all areas of the county. And I definitely wouldn't want to put that in our priorities. Not that I don't love my neighbors who live outside city limits, but we're the city government. But yeah, I guess I would hesitate to put any of that in there at this time because it's traditionally been the county government's responsibility.
Okay. Okay, so what about the fund, the city-county EMS coordinator position or similar? And then the thing that was on there that we could have talked about, which is not italics and still has to do with dispatch, is the continued investments and specialized central dispatch services. So, and then also in the first objective, which you can't see up there on the screen right now, it has to do with improved safety of community members and address disparities or inequities in existing public safety outcomes. Oh, that has to do with the non-police response team, never mind. So are there other comments about these italicized? And especially the last one about a city-county EMS coordinator. Councilmember Rosenberger.
I'm sorry, I thought, what's getting removed?
Ensure timely, reliable, and equitable emergency medical response across all areas of the county to protect life and health.
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith advocated to scratch that and Councilmember Asari concurred. And then EMS fund salary offset certification programs or stipends. Councilmember Asari, who's the original suggester of that, said that he would pull that. So the last one that we're, that is, that is still on there is the bottom one. And if anybody wants to advocate for something that somebody already said to pull, this is a moment for that, too.
I guess in general, I have a hard time with an added bullet in any category that says fund a position where we didn't get to vote on it in the list. And then like, I think there are city positions, if we were to be like, what new city positions do we need? I don't, I just have no idea what my priorities would be, I guess, yeah.
Okay. Response to that by anybody? All right. Does anybody object right now if we just delete all of the italicized things under public safety? Now is the moment to object for getting rid of all of the italicized things. Anybody objecting? All right, I am deleting all of the italicized things right now, which you will not see on the screen because I do believe the screen is a PDF document. And I am also, for transparency's sake, deleting the, if you, Councilmember Lehner, if you could scroll up just a little bit, I am deleting the explanation of what the italic font means. Right there it says items below in italic font, I am deleting that explanation. Well, I'll cross my fingers. I'm saying it all out loud so that then if the letter comes out different, then you all can, you know, there's a recording. Okay, so I wanted to make sure to go over that specific thing. And then I also, if we want to scroll down to health and human services, under investments, for investing $200,000 in co-location of mental health services and existing social service agencies, there was the outstanding question last week as to whether there are any agencies or organizations in Bloomington that are already working on that kind of thing that we could either partner with. Councilmember Daley, did you discover any initiatives like that in Bloomington currently?
None in the way that I was envisioning it. No, not, I don't think so, not that I was able to find. Now, there is, for example, the partnership with, you know, Beacon and Health Net where they're going to be visiting like Crawford houses for health checkups, you know, regular health issues there. I mean, that would be an opportunity then to also, you know, maybe look into adding mental health initiatives, something like that is what I'm thinking.
I think the question that I have, and maybe barring certain information about anybody is, should I put something in parentheses that implies or states like, or partners support with other agencies working on similar initiatives? Or should I just leave it the way it is? And we can just kind of, I mean, there is, the preamble kind of has it as ideas, but whether or not I explicitly state partnership, I mean, what do you, what do you guys want me to, want me to put here? Or do you want me to leave well enough alone? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I thought, Councilmember Daley, did you look into the Bloomington Health Foundation at all? I thought they were undertaking a similar project. So I guess my answer to Council President Stossberg would be, I would prefer to have something in there about possible partnerships. But Councilmember Daley, did you?
Not that I found.
Okay.
Right. I know I specifically was looking at Centerstone and Health Net. I don't think I looked at Blooming Health Foundation. Not that I recall. I'm fine adding that up in there.
Okay. So is there objection to my putting in parentheses after the 3.89, consider partnerships with organizations working on this initiative? Does that say clearly what people would like it to say? Consider partnerships with organizations working, or consider supporting partnerships? Consider supporting organizations working on this initiative? Okay, I'm going to say consider support of any organizations working on this initiative. Does that, does that cover our bases right now and clearly communicate with the administration the intent? Does anybody have any objection to that? Okay. Councilmember, sorry.
I just say, I think, you know, this is, and I know we've talked about this in, you know, the budget committee, but, I mean, this is our first step of collaborative process with Office of the Mayor and, you know, Deputy Mayor Knapp's here. Thanks for being here. And I don't think there's anything objectionable in the letter. It's starting, I mean, there's lots of other ideas and lots of other things that hopefully we'll continue to talk about. But, you know, like, the goal here is not to be exhaustive, right? I mean, it's to start the conversation and show where we're starting to have some support around things, but there's going to be continued conversation. So I, so I just sort of feel like we should, you know, send this along and continue.
Okay. I think the last question I have to ask, though, on that vein is, is there anything in here, especially the things that were added last week that do not have survey results, you know, numerically in the percentages, is there, or in the parentheses? Is there anything that anybody objects to being on here right now? Okay, I don't see any objections. And I also do want to make it clear or make it explicit that when this gets sent to the Office of the Mayor, it will have this letter. It will also have the, the list that Councilmember Piedmont Smith organized of everything that scored above a three, whether or not it made it into the letter, everything that scored above a three. And then it will also have the full results of that survey of everything that got suggested and the scores and the average scores so that then the administration knows all of those ideas and has explicitly been handed to them, whether or not they, you know, made the letter because those were things that at least one council member said were high priorities for them. So barring any other objections or comments, I guess I'm looking for a motion related to said letter.
Motion to send the letter.
Do we need to be more specific than that?
Motion to approve the letter to be sent by the council president, having made the edits necessary to send it to the mayor.
So I believe we have a motion on the table to send the 2026 budget priorities letter to the Office of the Mayor with a second. Are there any other last comments related to this? Do we need to do a roll call vote? Or can we do a voice vote on this? Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. I will get this to the Office of the Mayor tomorrow morning, or maybe tonight. We'll see what happens. We'll see how late this meeting goes. All right, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for all of your, your work on that and giving ideas and thinking about that letter and this process. Moving on then to reports from the public. So this is our first area of public, or time for public comment tonight, where the public can comment on items not on our agenda. If you're interested, if you're in chambers and interested in making a comment, please make your way to the podium and you'll have up to three minutes. If you are online and would like to make a comment, please use the reactions tab to raise your hand, or you can send a chat message to the host. And we're going to go ahead and start here in chambers. If you could please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher Emge from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Just want to do a little house cleaning today on some events and some other topics. And first is the cleanup, the downtown cleanup from Monday, which I thought was a big success. This was the second time the mayor's office has put this forward. I saw Councilmember Piedmont Smith there and other members of the community. There was a large amount of us. And as much as I criticize sometimes the cleanliness, the planters and other things in town, it's good for me to get my hands dirty doing some weeding and other things to really show that we want to make this look good. And I think these, these type of events that are collective in a community are really good, and I'd love to do this again sometimes very soon. The chamber held its second annual valor awards yesterday where we were welcomed by Councilmember Piedmont Smith again. That was our honoring of first responders. That would be police, fire, jail, personnel, EMS, and dispatch. And what I got from that was the selfless acts these individuals had. I was just really, really kind of blown away with all of, all of these stories and the heroicisms that were coming forward on that day. Next up for the chamber, we have Showcase Bloomington. This is our business expo and we've, we have it at Switchyard Park. We moved it from the fairgrounds. And this is the 29th of this month, a Thursday from four to eight PM, food, music, and more. It's kind of that entrepreneurial spirit that we sort of bring. It was a big success last year. I think we're going to duplicate it again this year. And, you know, speaking of community, we have the community conversation SB one, which was with a lot of different elected officials talking about the ramifications, which I, I thought was a really good sense of community that we had. And I kind of mentioned this at a county council meeting. But I'm a big youth sports guy and we have the Bloomington Junior League Baseball Association. So on Tuesdays and Thursdays at seven o'clock, you will find me there rooting for the Holden Wealth Green Team. So if you ever wanted to have a conversation with me about policy, politics, chamber business, I will be there. Now unfortunately, we have had 12 such outings this year and eight of them have been postponed because of rain or bad field conditions. Now, while 333 is very good in baseball terms, batting average, playing is not as good. So that's 33%. We need to do something with the flooding on that particular area. There's a lot of great baseball leagues here in the community, Unionville, Smithville, Lettsville. We need to make sure we're keeping up with that. I love Bloomington, very Bloomington-centric, but we need to be able to play baseball in order to enjoy baseball. That's all the time I have, I guess. I have five seconds, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Council Attorney Lehner, is there anybody online with their hand raised?
There are no hands raised currently.
Okay. I don't see anybody else in chambers moving to the podium for public comment? Nope. Okay. I think then we can move on. There will be other, another period of general public comment at the end of the meeting. Moving on to appointments to boards and commissions. Who, who has an appointment? Councilmember Daley?
Yes, thank you. So interview committee team B would like to recommend for the commission on the status of women, appointing C.C. Swalling to seat C1.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to appoint C.C. Swalling to seat C1 for the commission on the status of women. Do any council members have any questions on this appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, and thank you to C.C. for serving. Other motions? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. On behalf of Interview Committee Team C, I would like to recommend, or not recommend, but move the appointment of Jose Fuentes to Seat C4 of the Commission on the Status of Hispanic and Latina Affairs.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to appoint Jose Fuentes to the Commission on the Status of Hispanic and Latina Affairs. Do any councilmembers have any questions on the appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you. Interview Committee Team A would like to recommend for the Bloomington-Monroe County Human Rights Commission to appoint Kathleen Bensberg to Seat C2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Kathleen Bensberg to the Bloomington-Monroe County Human Rights Commission. Does anybody have any questions on that appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you to Kathleen and C.C. and Jose for their service on those various commissions. Moving on to legislation for first reading.
I move that ordinance 2025-11 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Forance 2025-11 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.02 and 20.04. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments in the UDO related to design standards in Chapters 2 and 4. There are 58 amendments identified.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-12 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-12 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.02 and 20.04. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments in the UDO related to design standards in Chapters 2 and 4. There are 58 amendments identified.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-13 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
To amend, Ordinance 2025-13 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.03. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments in the UDO related to use specific standards in Chapter 3. There are 10 amendments identified.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-14 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-14 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in BMC 20.05, 20.06, and 20.07. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments in the UDO related to use specific standards in Chapters 5, 6, and 7. There are 11 amendments identified.
Thank you.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2025-06 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor of reading appropriation ordinance 2025-06, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2025-06, an ordinance to appropriate food and beverage tax funds to the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates $10 million from the Food and Beverage Fund to the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board to begin construction of the Monroe County Convention Center Expansion Project.
Thank you. So those four ordinances about the UDO and then the appropriation ordinance will be discussed and heard at second reading two weeks from tonight. That would be on May 21, and that will serve as the public hearing for the appropriation ordinance. I do believe that we got a written comment about that appropriation ordinance, and if that constituent is listening, the discussion about that and the presentation will be two weeks from tonight. And for those of you who missed the introduction of the Agenda summation, we have been asked to not introduce the ordinances 2025-19 and 2025-20. Those will appear on a later agenda. They, I guess, were not quite ready. So moving on to legislation for second readings.
I move that ordinance 2025-16 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor of reading ordinance 2025-16, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-16 to vacate public parcel regarding a 20-foot-wide alley segment located in the southern half of the alley between West 10th Street and West Maker Way. The mill petitioner, City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commissioner, owner. The synopsis is as follows. The petitioner, the mill, and the owner, City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission, request vacation of an alley right-of-way that is used as part of a parking lot north of the Trades District parking garage to facilitate the development of the Trades District. The alley is oriented north-south and is roughly the southern half of the alley between 10th Street and Maker Way.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-16 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you, and I do believe that we have an amendment for this, so I think that we'll go ahead and do that first before a presentation.
I move that Amendment 1 for ordinance 2025-16 be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Daly, would you like to talk about Amendment 1?
Yep. As I was going through the packet over the weekend, I noticed that there was a typo in the second whereas clause. The date was listed as September 67, 2011, and I assumed they didn't really mean it happened on November 5 or something around there. So Attorney Lainer looked into what the actual date is supposed to be, and it is September 6, 2011. So we're just trying to correct that typo.
Are there any councilmember questions about the amendment? Seeing none, does a member of the public want to make a public comment about this typographical If you're in chambers, you can make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand or send a chat message to the host. Attorney Lainer, has anybody raised their hand? Great. I'll return back to council, then. Any final comments on Amendment 1? Great. I think that we do have to do a roll call vote on Amendment 1, so Clerk Bolden, if you could please call the roll on Amendment 1 to ordinance 2025-16.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So Amendment 1 passes unanimously, so now we are to the original ordinance 2025-16 as amended, and so who is here to present this tonight? If you could make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Sure. My name's John Fernandez. I'm here on behalf of the mill. I'm joined online by Charles Whitaker, who is the lead with the Alleywin LLC. They're part of the development team that's on board for this project. Let me just first say that we're super excited about this project. The Trades District Hotel is a really exciting development as it relates to the overall vision for the Trades District and what we're trying to do in terms of creating a very vibrant, mixed-use campus, if you will, for the innovation community and others. That's part of a shared vision that we all have. Let me also just thank the city planning department, the Redevelopment Commission, city legal, your economic sustainable development team as well for collaborating with us as we put together this request for the alley vacation. I mean, just in summary, I think the materials that are in the packet are pretty thorough between your staff, city legal, planning, and the mill's materials, but at a very top line, you know, we believe this resolution, the petition complies with the city's policy as it relates to alley vacation. And in particular, this alley vacation is going to enable us to, I think, create a much more effective design, a more efficient use of the land, and it will enable the hotel development to happen in a way that's going to ensure better street activation on 10th Street as well as Madison Street. It's also interesting that, you know, for this right-of-way, it's a right-of-way allocation or vacation, but it's not really an alley vacation because alleys never existed. It's platted on the subdivision for this particular part of the Trades District, but it's never been an alley. And in the materials we submitted, there were several photographs, historic photographs of what's been there. So, you know, it's not like we're giving up something that the community has been using and has relied upon, whether for pedestrian or vehicular traffic. Moreover, the alley that's platted, it doesn't connect to a network of other alleys. So we think that, in fact, with working with the planning professionals that you have here at the city and the development team, we can actually come up with a site plan that's going to really facilitate the kind of activation we want between the different uses, the different buildings. That'll actually be quite good and probably better than your traditional kind of alley network. Again, I think this will really enable us to, you know, create conditions for private investment here that's really going to enhance the district. It's going to add a lot of vitality and economic activity for the city of Bloomington, for our community. I'm happy to answer questions or go into more details, but I would just ask for the council's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilmembers for Mr. Fernandez? Nobody has any questions? Wow. I have a question.
Yes.
So I'm really pleased that onto the design, I mean, it's not so much that we're vacating an alley in some ways, but we're moving an alley, so that then, like, that public right-of-way space then goes in like an L shape around the forge, but that's not actually like platted anywhere right now, right? So like, tell me about the process as it moves forward around kind of reimagining that block.
Yeah, that would, the plan is to, and the commitment is to work with the city planning department as we go forward with an actual site plan approval, that that kind of dedication of any new right-of-ways would happen as part of that process, because they have to approve it as part of the site plan. So we think there's an opportunity to really, you know, make an enhanced, you know, I guess, you know, connection there for pedestrians, vehicles, you know, so that it functions well as a development site, but that's something that would happen as part of the actual site plan process. So we'll work with the planning department on that.
Okay. So right now, this is essentially a verbal commitment to have that L-shaped alley in there.
Yeah.
I just really, I just really hope that you, like, hold that side of the verbal commitment, because we can't necessarily, like, go back and do anything, but I think that that's just a helpful design in terms of thinking about what are alleys supposed to be for in terms of things like trash pickup and, you know, being able to go all the way through without having some strange dead-end alley there.
I can say this with absolute, you know, commitment, is that our interests are aligned. We have to have a functional egress, ingress, egress for vehicles, for pedestrians, et cetera. So it's, there's no misalignment here in terms of what the city's desires are and what the development desire is.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else think of any questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and go to public comment, then, if there are any members of the public who would like to comment on ordinance 2025-16. Can make your way to the podium if you're in chambers. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand or send a chat message to the host. We'll go ahead and start here in chambers. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes. Oh, hang on. Attorney Lainer?
Madam President, I just want to remind council that tonight's meeting constitutes a public hearing as required by Section 36-7-3 at SAC.
Great, thank you so much.
I'm sorry, what was that online?
Okay. Let's go ahead and start the public comment here in chambers. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening again, Madam President. This is Christopher Emge from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I'm supporting this ordinance before you on the alley vacation in the mill, and it's, I've been encouraged by what I've heard tonight. I've been in these meetings where these vacations or swaps have taken a long turn as far as discourse is concerned, and I get the value of this sort of infrastructure for utility purposes, a collection of waste, for transportations, for deliveries, but they have to have an active use and they have to have a functional integration. And I think what Mr. Fernandez showed is that this hasn't been a history of that, and what we need is something that's going to be functional for that specific site, which is the Trades District, that's going to unlock this really cool boutique hotel that's going to go there. We really wanted to see the Trades District to its peak, to its capacity, where it's really a hub for young professionals, entrepreneurs, and things that I think the city lacks. And I think allowing this sort of vacation sort of sets this in motion to move in the right direction. I thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there other members of the public in chambers who would like to comment on ordinance 2025-16? Are there any members on Zoom who have their hand raised?
No hands raised.
Okay. I think that brings us back to council, then. Do any councilmembers have final comments on ordinance 2025-16? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I'm happy to support this. I think one important facet of this project that allows me to support it is that we're not going to have a block face of a single building because 10th Street is curved at that point, and the preliminary plans are very much to kind of step back the part of the building at the curve, of course, out of necessity. And so it won't be this monolithic block face, which if you followed previous decisions, that's something that we don't really like to see. So I think as far as the design and the feel of that building, when you're walking by it, I think it'll be quite reasonable and quite comfortable because of that curve in the road and the ensuing design. So I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments? Councilmember Rallo?
Likewise, I'm going to support this. Generally, I'm cautious in the realm of vacation of alleys to serve as potential avenues for pedestrians or for connectivity, breaking up facades, as discussed by my colleague, but I don't see a use here that can, that competes with a new 150-bed hotel that can serve this area, and I want to congratulate Mr. Fernandez for his work on the Trades District. It's really terrific to see you coming along. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Other councilmember comments? Councilmember Assari?
Also echoing congratulations to former Mayor Fernandez for also being named the CEO of the mill. So congratulations both to us as the community and to you, sir. But I also, I think the same as you pointed out, Councilmember Stasburg, about I really love, actually, I think there's- love, actually, I think there's an additional, by vacating this alley, the addition of that L-shaped drive into the hotel, making it sort of, you know, multiple areas where people can come in, come out of the hotel. I think it's just really exciting. This is going to be the first full-service hotel in the city, which I think is, you know, really exciting, and I think just a reminder for all of us that Bloomington is open for business. Yay. But yeah, so I'm very excited about this development. It's in the right place, the right type of thing that we're looking for, so I'm very happy to support it.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Yes, just also thank you to former Mayor Fernandez for the presentation tonight, also for meeting previously to discuss this, similar to some of my colleagues. I think alleys are really important as a part of our urban fabric and form for a lot of the reasons cited, transportation, controlling building massing, utilities, loading, parking, et cetera. I think specifically like a connected street grid is important, and I think we haven't done a great job on a lot of fronts historically as a city, both like, for instance, when these were platted, like when the trades district was replatted, we probably should have platted like a full grid of alleys. Similarly, the council had to really push for that in the context of Hopewell, the prior administration had not intended to have alleys as part of that development. I think when it comes to the fact that it's not currently utilized as an alley or this is like a blank slate, I think to me that is like a little bit of the wrong question. It's not about what this was, it's about what it could be for the future, and so about opportunity cost. I think, you know, when we vacate right-of-way, we give it up forever. You're giving up a public benefit in perpetuity for private use, and, you know, I think there are many, many instances all over the community where we've regretted that, where we've done that and vacated right-of-way sometime in the last 100 years. And so, I think that's a concern for me. I think also it's a little bit of a false choice of, you know, evading in the alley for this development or the development can't happen or something like that, which no one said explicitly, but I feel like it's sort of been implicitly part of the conversation. But I'm not aware of another downtown hotel that takes up more than a half of a full city block, so the Hyatt, the Hilton Garden Inn, the Graduate, those are all on less than a half of a city block, which is what the lot as it exists is. And so, I guess I don't see a significant enough public benefit to justify giving up the, you know, public benefit of the alley and public right-of-way that is there now. So, I'm not going to vote to support it, but I do appreciate the perspectives around it and the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I am having a night of not that much talking, but I'll just say I would like to echo councilmembers Rallo and Flaherty. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ruff?
I'd like to ask for a point of clarification based on a comment that's been made. I mean, I know it should have ideally come up earlier, but it's a result of a councilmember comment, and it's simply that when I looked and thought about this before I made a decision in my mind to be supportive of it, that was before tonight, and so it's been a little while, and I'm confused. I thought that there was going to be some right-of-way granted. There was basically the exact same length of the right-of-way that's going to be vacated. So, there's going to be a new segment of alleyway created that's basically the same as the one that is being vacated. Is that, is that accurate?
I see our director of planning and transportation in the audience. I don't know if he wants to talk about that because that's kind of what I asked about in terms of that L shape, which is pictured, but is not anything except for kind of like a handshake promise that they're going to essentially replat it, and then that portion would then be public alley, but if you want to introduce yourself and maybe take a stab at that.
Thank you, David Hiddle, Director of the Department of Planning and Transportation. That's correct. Our, we are recommending approval, and our approval is conditioned on the provision of an east-west alley that would connect the southern terminus of the vacated alley to the east to Madison Street. Otherwise, you would have a dead-end alley, which is always a bad idea, and this keeps it contiguous and functional. And that could take, that commitment could take many forms. I think it's already been committed to and would be made condition of approval here tonight. Perhaps Mr. Fernandez can speak to that. But yeah, the expectation is that they come back and with the development of the hotel or whatever it is that gets put there, there would be a new alley platted east-west to connect the southern end of the remainder of this north-south alley to Madison.
So, this would basically be like at the plan commission stage when that site plan gets approved, that is when that portion would get converted from the private land into the public alleyway?
Yes, it would be essentially the reverse of this process. They would have a survey showing the alley that would be dedicated as new right-of-way and provide that and make that part of the plat, amend the plat essentially.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Ruff? Thank you, Mr. Hiddle. I appreciate it. Are there other councilmember comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I'll just briefly follow up on the point because I think it's relevant what Mr. Ruff brought up. I do appreciate that also, that there's consideration for dedication in the future of additional right-of-way. I did kind of mention that I think it was an oversight and a shortcoming not to plat the trades district with full crosswise gridded alleys at the start. I think that really, I mean, I'd like to explore, I guess, policy options even for that, not specifically with trades, but as a general practice, because it's obviously not something that we're in the habit of doing even currently when we are plating new areas of the city for redevelopment. And so, that's something I think we could improve on, you know, consistent with our, some of our goals and just good urban planning practice. I think there is an element to me of like, there's importance of linear connectivity specifically, so like through connectivity, and so that's something that's lost here as far as the north-south piece of it. And so, that's relevant in my mind as well. But again, do appreciate the intent to dedicate additional right-of-way.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Okay, I'll just, I'll just say that I appreciate Councilmember Flaherty's concern over public right-of-way and the importance of alleys and connectivity. I do think in this situation that that L-shaped alley kind of works for me in terms of that concern that I have about it, and because it is kind of starting with a blank slate, I think that, and I think that it'll feel okay and work okay in that space at this point, so I intend to support it.
And seeing no further comments, would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 2025-16 as amended? Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Thank you. That passes with a vote of 7-1. Councilmember Daly?
I move ordinance 2025-17 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
All those in favor of the clerk introducing ordinance 2025-17, please say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-17, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2024-19 that fixed the salaries of officers and employees of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2025. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends ordinance 2024-19, an ordinance fixing salaries for officers and employees of police and fire by allowing the fire, by allowing fire department employees who were hired in December of 2024 but started in 2025 to receive a sign-on bonus and by revising positions in the police department as follows: updated job titles and grades for three positions, adding a position, and removing a position. The amendment comes at the request of the human resources department to reflect changes to several positions within the city.
Thank you.
I move ordinance 2025-17 be adopted.
Thank you. It looks like we have our director of human resources here to present, so if you could state your name for the record?
Yes, good evening, council. Shar Paycheck, Director of Human Resources. I am here to present salary ordinance 2025-17, and as summarized, this is for the fire department and the police department, and there's a firefighter that started in 2024 that just missed our orientation process in order to receive their bonus, and so the fire chief is requesting that we honor all of the steps that that firefighter went through in order to start in time and just was unable to because of our internal processes. And this ordinance also reflects requests from the police chief, Decoff, in order to amend and eliminate and right-size basically some positions that are in the police department, records, and dispatch in order to better reflect what the operational needs are of those departments. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have to the best of my ability.
Great, thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Paycheck? Nobody has any question? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, so I asked some of these via email earlier, but just for the public's benefit. So, the new position of accreditation and quality assurance specialist/telecomunicator two, is that, is there an incumbent who's going to take that position and what was their position title before?
My understanding is that there is an incumbent for that position, but just to add some clarity to it, there is a employee who is currently in the official title of dispatch manager, but is actually, has been pulled from that role to primarily focus on Kalia certification. That is what they have been doing for some time now. And so, what this request is doing is actually creating a position for that individual to actually focus on accreditation and then creating an opportunity for the individual that is currently in the director of civil operations position to actually go into that dispatch manager position.
Okay, I see. So, the incumbent in the director of civil operations is moving to a district dispatch manager position that already exists?
Correct.
Okay. And then the person currently in that dispatch manager position is actually working on accreditation, so they'll take the new position?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a follow-up on that real quick? Well, it's kind of out of order though. So, you just said that the director of civilian operations is going to move into a dispatch manager position?
Yeah, because...
And I'm just, I'm just wondering where that is on like the flow chart, like the department organization chart? I don't know if you have it in front of you, but...
Well, you, I don't know which one you have in front of you, but if you have the 2025 org chart, is that where, which org chart are we looking at?
I have, I have the one that was in our proposed budget packet from last August.
From last August? Okay, so that would be the 2025 one. And so, if you're looking at the police department org chart for 2025, if, I don't, if you have the same one I have, like all the way over to the right, under dispatch and records, there is a director of civilian operations.
Yes.
So, that position is designed to oversee both dispatch and records. That has actually not been happening. So, this individual who is in this position has been in a position where they are supposed to be managing dispatch, but they haven't actually been in that dispatch manager position. And so, that's why the request for this evening requests to eliminate the director of civil operations position. Again, no one has really been functioning in that position, especially because that position is supposed to be overseeing both dispatch and records. So, with the elimination of that position, that means that the incumbent in that position will go to the telecom manager. That is what you will see on your org chart.
Okay, which is, which you just called like the dispatch manager?
I did, I'm sorry, yes.
Well, no, that's fine, but that's like, that's what the dispatch manager is, and then the records supervisor is like somebody different, and they're doing something different. And so, there won't be, so who will those people report to then?
Who will the telecommunications or who will the dispatchers report to?
Yeah, like if that telecom manager and that records supervisor were currently reporting to the director of civilian operations, where are they reporting to instead? Or are they not really reporting to?
Well, both the telecom manager and the records manager both report to Captain Pettigo.
Okay, so they'll, we're just skipping out that line.
And that is the current structure. There is no change to that. They currently report up to Captain Pettigo.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Asari, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Paycheck. Currently, this, for ordinance 17, this only affects one, one individual. Is there any universe in which it affects more than one individual?
What do you mean by it affects one individual? Are you thinking of the director of civilian operations that will go to the telecom manager? Is that what you mean by it affects one?
Not the shift, but the bonus portion of this, it's only...
Thank you for the clarification. Fire.
Exactly. We're talking about the fire, because that's what we're talking about now, right? That's the, right, we haven't combined these two.
This one ordinance, it amends the public safety salary ordinance, so police, fire, dispatch, we're all in the same ordinance. So, this ordinance has the line about the fire department and also has a second section about the dispatch changes.
It's one firefighter.
It's one firefighter.
It's just one firefighter, so that would be budget implications of $5,000 plus fringe benefits, yes.
And is there any, is there any context, especially with firefighters now with their ability to move multiple...
No, we don't believe so. We believe when that budget was offered, there was just one individual, again, based on our internal processes. It was towards the end of the year, around the holidays, we have less orientations in December, so they just missed that cutoff. No fault of their own.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Okay, I have another one. The updated job title changes to categorize folks as the administrative clerk one, administrative, or sorry, administrative clerk two, administrative manager two, and administrative manager three. Is that kind of categorization of like manager two, manager three, clerk two, I could imagine a clerk one or clerk three, is that something that you're trying to kind of standardize across the city in terms of like job titles and how they relate to responsibilities across departments?
Yeah, we're trying to get there because when you look at the one, the two, and the three, really what that means is that those positions are very similar, which means based on the duties, they are graded the same, so like a grade six or a grade seven, but some of them have specializations. And so, the specializations warrant the one, two, and the three, but the specializations don't necessarily warrant a higher job grade.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions right now, kind of looking as I say that, let's go ahead and move on to public comments right now on ordinance 2025-17. If there's any member of the public who would like to make a comment on ordinance 2025-17 in chambers, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. And I don't see anybody in chambers making a sprint for the podium, so I'm just going to give it a minute online to see if anybody would like to raise their hand and speak. Attorney Laner, has anybody? Okay, let's bring it back to council then for any final comments. Oh, follow-up question from Councilmember Asari.
Just a super quick one. The police portion of 17, does, does that reflect changes in goals, priorities, or is this sort of a natural evolution of particular roles and...
I would say if it affected any goals, it wouldn't be big picture. It wouldn't change the high-level goals of it except for to better position dispatch to operate in a way that there is a clear structure of management and support of the overall center, so. overall center, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Or, or sorry, not any other, any final comments from council members? Okay, seeing no final comments, I think that we're ready to call the roll on Ordinance 2025-17. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff? Yes.
Great, thank, thank you. That passes unanimously. Next.
I move Ordinance 2025-18 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded to read Ordinance 2025-18. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-18, an ordinance to amend Ordinance 2024-20 that fixed the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2025. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Ordinance 2024-20, which fixes salaries of appointed officers, non-union and AFSMI employees for the year 2025. This amendment revises the grade for one position, creates a position, and eliminates three positions. The amendment comes at the request of the Human Resources Department to reflect changes to several positions within the city.
Thank you.
I move Ordinance 2025-18 be adopted.
Second. Thank you. If you want to state your name for the record again, thank you so much.
Shar Paycheck, Director of Human Resources. I am here to present Ordinance 2025-18. This ordinance includes an, a position that will be eliminated in the Hand Department, which would be a Program Manager position. The reason why it's being eliminated is to replace it with an Operations Manager position. Director Killian Han, Director of Hand believes that this new role will manage additional staff and oversee all public-facing events and outreach. And this cost difference should be minimal because it's just going to be the difference between eliminating the Program Manager position and adding the Operations Manager position. So again, this is what Director Killian Hansen feels would be best for the Hand Department and the operations that they need. This ordinance also reclassifies the, for the Council Office, the Assistant Administrator, the Legal Research Assistant. So the Human Resources Department receives some revised duties and requirements for this position. And so we agree that that would warrant an increase in the grade in order to both attract and retain talent. And the Utilities Department, the, the TND Department, has requested to eliminate two positions that basically are, are not currently filled, have not been filled for a while, or they do not feel like they are needed for operations going forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. Are there questions from council members? Nobody has any questions? Councilmember Asari?
The first question that I have is for the, the Hand position, is this, are we, sorry, I'm speaking far away from the microphone. Is this going, is this an open position currently? Is somebody being moved into this position? Is somebody getting promoted? Like where, what's the, the status of that role?
The Program Manager position is currently an open position.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what Director Killian Hansen has in mind as far as like any type of internal promotion related to that position.
Okay, okay, but so, so the new position will also be open?
The Operations Manager position, yes.
Okay, and then, and so, so when we say that there's a neutral budget effect, it's, it's that we've already budgeted for that position, so should, but this, this person, is that the same ranking as the Program Manager? Is that correct?
No, so the fiscal impact would be the difference because the Program Manager position, I believe that one is maybe a grade nine? It's a nine, yeah. And then the Operations Manager position will be a grade 10.
Oh, it is a higher grade.
Yeah, so it's a higher grade. So there is a fiscal impact in the difference of that, and I think it's in the budget memo, but maybe a difference of $10,000? I can find it if you want it exact, but it's the difference.
Twenty-two cents, according to your memo.
Yes. That would be the difference in the grade nine and the grade 10 if we budget to the midpoint, which is our practice.
Yep, excellent.
As a follow-up to that, on the org chart, which one of those Program Managers is being eliminated? Because on the org chart, there's Neighborhood Services, Affordable Housing, Loan and Housing Counseling, Rental Inspections, Housing and Construction, and Historic Preservation.
I'm sorry, I don't have that information. I can find it, I can follow up with you. Director Killian Hansen was here, just in case you had questions, but she had to sneak out, so I apologize for that.
That's okay. I was just kind of curious, and then similarly, like how that is going to end up going into the org chart is also something I'm kind of curious about with that new position because it's going to be a grade 10, so it's going to be a little above those Program Managers. So are they going to be like supervising some of those Program Managers?
I believe that the...
Oh.
On your org chart, the Rental Inspectors, there are Program Managers for the Rental Inspectors. This Operations Manager position will help to supervise those Rental Inspectors.
Okay.
And so your question of how they would fit into the overall org chart, they would oversee those Rental Specialists as a grade 10, but this department also has a grade 11 Assistant Director, and that grade 11 Assistant Director reports directly to the Director, and they are more of the individual who would oversee all of Hand in the absence of the Director.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll ask Director Killian Hansen about more details of that, maybe, maybe in the budget hearings in August, how she wants to redo things.
Okay.
Are there other questions? We'll go to Councilmember Asari for a second round.
Maybe just a super quick one. Could you talk about what the specific responsibilities of the Research Assistant for Council that were in the new, updated, that, that sort of, what was, what was new that led to it being reclassified?
That is a good question. I don't have the position description in front of me. What, what would normally warrant a higher grade would be the number of years that are required, like the number of years of experience, and also the level of education. Those things would warrant a higher grade and just an overall better outline to better capture what the actual roles and responsibilities are of that person. So if they are of that position, if they are broader, if they are more advanced, if they require a more advanced skill set, once those things are introduced into a revised job description, that is when it is considered for a higher grade, so that what, that's what would have been submitted for this position to warrant the grade increase.
Are there other questions? I have one. In terms of those two Utilities positions that are being eliminated, are there currently people in those roles?
There are not currently people in those roles, no. Either they have been vacant for a while now, or there is no intent to need those positions to fill them in the future.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions on this, let's go ahead and go to public comments on Ordinance 2025-18. If there's a member of the public who would like to comment on this ordinance, please make your way to the podium. If you're online, go ahead and use the Reactions tab to raise your hand, or you can send a chat message to the host. Once again, I don't see anybody rushing the podium here in chambers, but we'll give it a minute to see if anybody online raises their hand or sends a message. Attorney Laner, is there anybody with their hand raised?
No.
Okay, thank you. I think that brings us back to council. Are there any council member comments on Ordinance 2025-18? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I'm very pleased to see the change in the Council Researcher/Assistant Administrator position. That's something that I, I fought for last fall, and I am glad that we're, we're changing that. I would even hope for a seven eventually, but a six is better than a five, so great to see that. And then I just want to briefly say that I'm disappointed that we're not going to have sewage-sniffing dogs, which were proposed two years ago, since that Engineering Field Tech K9 unit is now no longer going to have a staff member and is not going to exist anymore. But I was looking forward to meeting the sewage-sniffing dogs, but other than that, I'm, I'm fine with this ordinance and pleased with your work on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council member comments?
I'll, I'll just do a quick comment then, and I just want to send a thank you out to Council Attorney Laner. I know that she has worked really hard over the past few months trying to figure out this Legal Research Assistant job description, and, you know, as somebody who's, who's new to the office, kind of doing that work and understanding what is really needed in that role for somebody and what those job duties need to be, and then going through the process that needed to be gone through, I really appreciate her work on that. And I'm looking forward to having somebody permanently in that position again, and I'm, I'm thankful that we do have a temporary staff member starting next week, but I'm looking forward to that, being able to be advertised accurately in the future. And I'm also pleased to support this. I'm also, you know, there were a lot of discussions about the Hand Department last year, and they're starting some, some different initiatives on different services, and I'm, I'm excited to kind of see where some of this organizational shifting goes and how it, how it plays out in the future. So thank you, and thank you to Director Paycheck for both of these ordinances and the work that, that you and your staff have done through this whole process.
New consideration and support, thank you.
Unless there are further comments, will the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance 2025-18? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes with a vote of eight-zero. That is it for our legislation this evening, so we're moving on to a period of additional public comments. This is a, a second time set aside to, for the public to be able to give comments on items not on the agenda. If you're a member of the public here tonight and you want to comment on something not on the agenda, if you're in chambers, you can make your way to the podium and you will have up to three minutes. If you're online, go ahead and raise your hand using the Reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. And I, I only saw somebody pretend jogging to the podium here in chambers, but we'll give it a minute to make sure there's nobody online who wants to say anything. Council Attorney Laner, is there anybody online who's raised their hand?
No hands are raised.
Okay, we're going to keep on going down our agenda then to matters of council schedule. The, I have a couple of things to announce. One, of course, is that our next meeting is next week on May 14th, where we will have a deliberation session with the administration about budget items, trying to figure out our shared budget priorities and just continued collaboration and discussion about that. Our next regular session is two weeks from today on May 21st, so those items that were read for first reading will be discussed that evening. And the other note that I just want to get on people's calendar right now is the groundbreaking for the Convention Center is on Tuesday, June 3rd at 3:30. So council members, there was an invitation sent out by the CIB today about that, but just for the public as well, so it's recently been announced, that's 3:30 on Tuesday, June 3rd. Are there any other matters of council schedule that anybody would like to point out? Seeing none, I think that that means we've made our way to the end of the agenda and we are adjourned. Thank you very much for your time.